Let's stand and do the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Dick, public discussion?
If it's the bridge, he's on the agenda. If that's all you're here for.
Well, unless we want to talk about the engineer, which is on later on too.
It's up to you.
Well, I'll mention there, you guys can let the engineer's contract lapse, and he can still work for you. You can make one that's taxpayer and supervisor friendly. He doesn't seem to think he has to answer to anybody anymore. And that's not the case. Some supervisors have said we can't do anything with him. No, that's not the way it should be. You can let his contract lapse and have the county attorney write one that's fair enough. When he can be hired by three, and it takes five to firing. He's not held responsible for anything he does. He gets paid a full year if he's terminated. Those aren't standard contracts. Okay, six months, huh? But that's not a standard contract. He doesn't thi- he thinks he's got, this county is his own little realm and he rules it. He's an employee, he needs to be reminded of that. If you let his contract lapse, he can still work. Write up a new contract, he has an option to sign it or not sign it. But we're, we've given him too much power and he's abusing it.
I'd like to thank Mr. Whacker for giving me that name he did. I got a old lady. She was not scared of me, she said she was just, for the record, that she was just surprised how it turned from boom to boom right now. She goes, "I wasn't scared of you," she goes, "I wasn't worried that you're gonna come after me," or nothing like that. So, but, she was apologizing to me because she thought it made me look bad, which I said, "No, don't worry about it." But, uh, like I said, I would like to thank you for giving me that name so I could get that all cleared up, thank you.
We're up to approve the agenda in minutes dated July eleventh. Ten twelve to two minutes for twenty twenty-three.
I'll motion to approve.
What's up, Ben?
Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Post, motion carried unanimously. Has everybody looked at claims?
I'll make the motion to approve the claims.
I have a motion to approve the claims. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any questions on the claims? Any comments? Yes. All those in favor of approving the claims, please say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion carried. Danny, you're up.
Alrighty. Okay, so, uh, good morning, everybody, my report for June. Uh, pretty busy month, I had forty-three phone calls and fifty-four messages, fifty-eight walk-ins, twenty-one scheduled appointments. Uh, two appointments out of office. We did a veteran transport, we were able to get five hearing aids repaired as well. Currently tracking eleven hundred and sixty-seven records in the system. Uh, I've got forty-two sitting open in VA Claims Register, uh, waiting for them to act on those. I have six that are awaiting decision. I have fourteen under development that I'm working on, one supplemental, and then I completed one VA healthcare enrollment. Uh, recently, uh, completed District Five training in Marshalltown last Friday over at the Iowa Veterans, uh, home. I'll give you a better update on, uh, my trip over there here on my next report. It was really quite interesting, it was not what I expected. It's more like a college campus, uh, in a sense, as opposed to a nursing home. And I took a few pictures, I'll put those in there. Uh, veterans got their own little gardens they can tender. Uh, there's little cottages at the vets' home for families to stay, especially if someone's near their end of life. Uh, really, quite, quite a facility, so I'll, I'll give you more of an update on that. Standing by to meet with the, uh, Iowa Department of Veterans Affairs and Assist with any training, uh, coordination for our, uh, fall conference. Uh, could be, could be in October, might be as late as November, we don't know yet. The contracts have been let out for bid as far as a venue. We don't have one yet that I'm aware of. Uh, I am going to be online today, uh, to meet with our state Board of Directors for our association at eleven o'clock. Those are some things we're gonna talk about and try and get visibility on. Um, I did not have any outreach activity for June, uh, as scheduled because I did a military funeral honor in lieu of that. Uh, but for July, I'm looking to attend the, uh, Economic Development Breakfast, uh, later here next week. And then Vets Night at the Races and helping with the color card. We did get the OSOF Office and our three new commissioners, uh, sworn in and in process, thank you, Kyle, for that. So, they hit the ground running. Um, we'll continue to focus on, uh, VA healthcare enrollment. That PACD Act deadline is coming up in, I believe, August or September. And then after that, they go back to the asset piece of that for determination. So I'm trying to get as many enrolled in that as I can. I'll continue training, uh, with the PACD Act claims. Uh, I'm actually working two Iowa Veteran Trust Fund applications. One is for dental assistance, the other one is to replace a tub and install a shower because the veterans have risk of falling, so we don't want that to happen, so we're gonna try and get them a new shower. Uh, still waiting for the state grant report from IDVA. I thought maybe that was just my report, but it sounds like a lot of my peers are also waiting on those funds to be released. So I will update you when, uh, I receive those. Um, I did, uh, put in some PACD Act updates, there's an impact in your packet that just kinda gives the highlights of what's going on with some of those deadlines. And then also I put in there, uh, information regarding the tenure of the commissioners and how long their terms are and when they're due to expire, I tracked that as well. I did complete that gender diversity thing that the auditor sent out. And we got the asset visibility inventory completed for my department, uh, no issues there. Uh, subject to your questions, that's really all I have at this time.
What's your guess on eleven hundred and sixty-two records, how many, are they all active?
Um, there's, there are some that are deceased, both military spouse and veteran. And then some of them are just a veteran, but the spouse survives. And I don't have the ability to build a query to structure a report, so I can refine that number yet. I'm working with VetPro to be able to do that. And VetRespec, I could, I could more table that. Uh, but unfortunately, right now, it, it just have to be by guess and by golly. So, active records of that eleven sixty-seven would probably be more appropriate to about eleven twenty. There's, because we lose about forty veterans per year, forty to forty-five, so just a rough estimate, about eleven twenty-ish for active. But I'll, I'll try and, uh, see what I can do about prodding those guys along and...
That's your new program, right?
That's my new program, yeah. They're still working on some issues yet, the report features unfortunately are not as robust as the VetRespec was. But that one's going away and some people who didn't transition now are not happy with what they're being offered as a replacement. So I kinda am glad I didn't go that route anyway, but we'll get those numbers tightened a little bit more, so. Any other questions?
Thanks.
Alrighty, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good day, guys.
You too.
We're up to, uh, possible discussion decision bridge on one sixty-five Avenue between two hundred and fiftieth Street and two hundred and sixtieth Street.
You want me to call Doug?
It's up to Dick, you want Doug up here?
Nope.
You don't?
He doesn't need to be.
Sure.
What I've got to say, only to French you guys mainly. Here's the deal, I sat here and bit my tongue last week when he said that if I put across, he'd, it has to be up to standards. That's why I sent those pictures in, that's a Class A road from the north. That doesn't look like a Class A road, I'd love you guys to top that hill at fifty without having a roll bar and a, a helmet, because, and that's a public road there. But the piece from my ground to just north of the bridge, for thirty years, that man sat in the engineer's office as an assistant or as the main engineer, back in nineteen ninety-one, I believe it was. They created a Level C road, added by House File four nineteen, Code of Iowa, Section three oh nine point five seven. A Level C road may be established by the supervisors by ordinance or resolution. What it does is it closes the road, it doesn't close the road, the county owns the road, we put gates in. The only person that has a lock for that gate is me or any other person that needs to use that. If there's no access past that gate for anybody, they don't get a key for it. That's been on, for thirty years, I've been trying to get access to cross that road with any means.
What was that code section you said?
House File four nineteen, Code Section three oh nine point five seven, five seven.
Okay, and what was the house file?
House File four nineteen.
From this last year?
No, nineteen ninety-one.
Okay.
So I tried to get, as those pictures show, he's vacated that road from my lane to the pole bridge. I have one access to some land north of that, my lane.
How does, is that Alliance poles there, how, they use the road?
Corn belt.
That's corn belt?
Corn belt.
They use the road, I'm assuming?
They usually come in from the south and come in from the north. They usually use four-wheelers, most of the time they just fly by the helicopter and inspect it, but they do come in with four-wheelers.
And there's barricades on both ends of the bridge, what's up?
At this time.
Is there just the, I thought I saw in the one, it had a part of a picture, uh, road closed, bridge out? Is that all that's at the edge of the roads to the north and south?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, I went up and drove, drove up there and looked at it, and I saw it immediately. And I drove it years ago, and I remember I, I accidentally went down that road and realized it was a little...
And, uh, there's a lot of semis, feet, some, and every new feet semi-driver, that road doesn't show, it's not going through, so they come up, they usually end up asking if they can turn around in my yard, because it's a pain to back up that, that road, especially in the winter, if it's a little icy. But he's known about that for thirty years and has fought me on putting anything across that area, which, and I could have had a Level C road, which would have been beneficial to me. By that, the county engineer's office has negatively impacted my bottom line for thirty years because of crossing not being allowed. And you guys can allow it without his permission, you guys control that. But that north road coming down Dad's Land may go up for auction, is the state plan. And the only access to that is just north of that barricade on the north side of the bridge. I've talked to the auctioneer and the appraiser, they both said that the land value, it will be hugely impacted by that being such a pitiful road.
Which, which, which chunk is that, Dick?
Uh, from the north, down to the bridge from the north, where those big ruts are in that road.
Okay, that'd be Greg Albert's?
Greg Albert has property down there too, yes. But he claimed I had standards to live up to, so does he. That road is a Level A road. And that will definitely affect the value of that estate sale, if and when we have it, because that road is pitiful. There's nobody gonna wanna drive down that road. Especially if you start taking crops off that after they, somebody else, if somebody else were to buy that.
So if I'm hearing you correctly, uh, your desire is to put in a bridge again and, and have it as a, potentially a Level C road, where you or other landlords would then have access to that road?
It would only be me, because...
Or you?
Because Greg Albert's access to his land on the south side is south of, okay, where those signs are, and his access is north of the barricade on the north end of the bridge.
Okay.
So I, and I'd like to have input of where we put the gates too.
Sure.
I don't want them right on the edge of the bridge where, and I'd like to have them at two foot so that I can open and close them in the winter when I try to get through it. But, uh, Greg Albert would still be able to access from the north and if the road was brought up to what it should be, but if it isn't, that land's gonna be worth very little if we have, if they have to take trucks of it. Most people use semis nowadays, you wouldn't go up and down that road from the north with a semi, it's just not. But he's abandoned the road, virtually what he's done.
Well, I guess that's kinda what it looks like from the pictures.
But I'd like to make him live up to standards that he, he expect, last week he sat there and said that if I put a bridge in, I had to have certain standards I had to meet. He could have said, "Hey, we can go with a Level C road," but they've sat on that for thirty years. Thirty years I've been trying to get that and not once has that been mentioned. Now when I find it out, I, it just burns me. I'd like to say a lot of things, and I'm not going to, but that's a jerk that does that, sets on information like that for thirty years, that it could have been done. And I, I request that you guys do create a Level C road in that area, either by ordinance or resolution.
I think it'd be good to look up that house file and just to clarify the language there and, uh, at least look into it.
The code section should be able to find for...
Find online. Three oh nine point five seven. You know, about the size of those smaller move, if nobody sees.
So, yeah, I guess service area C classification roads may have restricted access and a minimal level of maintenance as specified by the County Board of Supervisors after consultation with the engineer. And it should adequately warn the public that access is limited. They can only be classified as a service area C by ordinance or resolution. So I guess what I would say, I don't think, I don't think we can do this without consultation of the engineer, so we probably should have Doug up here, but I don't know if we need to have Todd as well for, uh, ordinance or resolution in whatever form that should be.
You can do as, but...
Either or, as the code says.
I may be on vacation here or there, so I may not attend the next one, but I presented my case that a Level C road is perfect for me. And any, once those gates are up, they've gotta have signage on it. If anybody crosses that, they are trespassing and they can be charged with trespass. So therefore, the bridge need not be up to every standard that is required for pedestrian travel.
And then you would install that bridge, correct?
I will install the bridge.
Okay.
But the way I read it, the county has to install the posts, the gates, and the signage. That is their duty to make it the way it's supposed to. And that, and that with a Level C road, heaven forbid, somebody wants to put in a real bridge again someday. It just, they can do so, pull it right back out of Level C and it can bounce right back up to a Level A road at the discretion of the engineer and supervisors at any given time.
Let me, the board's wishes that we put it on the agenda at a future date when Dick is available and have the county attorney review the code section and give us an opinion on how it should be worded or, or if it can be done or can't be done.
That'd be fine.
Yeah. Yeah, um, I, I guess, should we have a motion to direct the county engineer and attorney?
County attorney.
Well, either or, or both, um...
I think we should have the motion for both.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was thinking, both, um. So I'd make a motion to direct the county engineer and attorney to look into classifying the road as discussed as a Level C based on that code section three oh nine point five seven.
Do you want it in there that there's a possibility that a wa- uh...
ATV bridge?
ATV bridge would we put across, or...
I don't think that's necessarily right, I think the discussion is that direction, but I...
First step would be making it a Level C and then we can move forward after that.
So you're, you're gonna make a, another determination if a bridge can be put across?
Yes.
Yeah, I think we would...
Is that sufficient?
I think we would address that later. Did you, did I talk slow enough?
Do you want me to repeat it?
Yes.
Sure, that'd be a good idea.
Uh, direct county engineer and county attorney to look into classifying, um, one hundred and sixty-fifth Avenue between two hundred and fiftieth Street and two hundred and sixtieth Street as a Class Three road per Iowa Code three oh nine point five seven.
Class C?
C, sorry, I wrote three, but not C.
Class C.
Class C.
Just a portion of that road, not the whole thing. It's the way someone to put the deed up or down by myself, road, like, just a small portion.
Just, we, we should be able to specify the location when we go through with action, it's the
Perfect.
Building the foundation as far as I can.
You just want it close to where the bridge is.
Yep, from my lane, or farther than a... I want the maintainer to be able to drive past my lane before it hits the gate and back into my lane.
Well, they're not maintaining it now anyway, so...
How about the north side, is it gonna have room to get in there to blade?
He'll have, he can come from the north side, he can come and he can turn in Greg Albert's lane or he can back up into my lane, or my dad's lane, it's not my lane, it's my dad's lane into his. And he, they've done it, they used to, people where it used to do it.
Okay.
He used to be able to back up it.
Okay.
We don't wanna make something that's impossible.
Oh, no.
Yeah.
So, am I okay with leaving it?
They can make that link much further if they want.
Between two fiftyth and two sixtieth for now?
Yeah, I, I think when we get to the point of actually acting on it, we can set the specific area.
Any more discussion on the motion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Josh was talking, but I don't know if he seconded it.
Yeah, I'll second it.
I, I thought he did.
I, I didn't, I didn't mention that, I was just clarifying, but yeah, I'll second it.
I knew you had said something, Jim.
Do I have a motion of second on the floor, is any discussion? Seeing none, do a roll call vote, please.
Class?
Yes.
Now?
Yes.
Whacker?
Yes.
Spector?
Yes.
Jerks?
Yes.
And are one of you gonna talk to Todd and, um, Doug, or do you want me to forward them the information?
Doesn't matter.
Forward it to, from the board?
Okay.
Include them both, I guess.
Okay.
Yeah.
Exactly. Okay.
That works.
Should be fine.
Thanks for coming in.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
We are up to it. Acknowledged transfers made by the auditor of two thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars and thirty-nine cents from General Basic to Secondary Road and nineteen thousand fifty-five dollars and eleven cents from Rural Basic to Secondary Road. The transfers were made on July fifth. Any comments, discussion, if not, let the record show that we acknowledged them. Uh, you wanna call Dick on the taxes?
What's his, Tammy, you know his number? Oh, two thirty.
Sorry.
You're good. That's what the sheet's here for. Hey, Nick, it's Kyle in the boardroom, do you wanna come in for the taxes? Perfect, thanks.
It's just close to you, Card.
Yep. Or, well.
In St. Town.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything in Laverne is close to me.
It's that small.
Morning, Nick.
Morning.
Morning, Nick.
Morning, morning, morning. Yeah, Nick, you wanna give us the history on the abatement?
Kyle White.
Carter.
Carter.
Or I'm sorry, Carter. Um, it sounds like the city of West or I, I mean, can I just like you?
Yeah, that's fine.
Explain what's going on there.
Oh, my, Carter Nathir, City Council. Um, but uh, no, we uh, we've been working on getting possession of this property. And it's probably the biggest ISO in towns right on Main Street, crossing fire station, church and downtown stuff, so um. We're, you know, the plan is to tear it down, but we're looking to um clear up the leans against the houses and there's some back taxes that need to be paid. For on the county end and on the city end. Um, and so we're asking for abatement per transfer to the city and when that should happen. So that we can move forward with cleaning up the community in that way.
Yeah, as far as property taxes go on that particular piece of property, it's, it's very low. Uh, there's like forty six dollars and then there's a five dollar drainage assessment. But the majority of it is uh, um part of it's the city of Laverne, they have a city special on it, so does Iowa Lakes Regional Water. And I think you've been in contact with them. Um, I can't remember how we left it, what they would, Iowa Lakes Regional Water was going to do, but.
They they usually are willing to work with us on a kind of history and transfer to the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, but uh, yeah, then the city, I mean, since they're gonna be the ones taking it over, um, I don't know, I might. When this transaction takes place, what we might need to do is have the city just send us a letter.
Yep.
Or the the city, or council, or the council, hey, take these abatements off, so, or these uh specials off, so. So we really wouldn't have to abate those. And if Iowa Lakes Regional works with you on something, um, that would would have to get contact with them also so we can get it off of our books, so. But uh, as far as property taxes go on that, it's it's very minimal.
Right.
So.
Just trying to get everything cleared up and zeroed out and transferred over, yeah.
Two little triangle pieces.
Yep.
He has two of them there. I didn't know which one, I didn't know if we're doing it for both of them or not, but.
Four.
Oh, he's got two lots there.
Yeah, that uh, you have two little triangles there, it looks like, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yep. And there was a several thousand dollar lien against the property and I I met with the property owner who lives in west Des Moines now.
Okay.
Um, and we signed that paper over um certainly.
Oh.
To have that lien forgiven, well, with measure of trailer.
Yeah, that was not like a city special or anything like that.
No, no, that was a second.
Then we wouldn't know anything about it.
Been working on this one for a while.
Yeah, yeah, I know, I know, so, I mean, um, I I think if uh we can get um the city and Iowa Lakes to to send us something saying, you know, please take these off and Iowa Lakes has a preliminary coming on for this coming fall. Have, get that taken care of also. Um, I I would recommend to make a little bit of taxes there are on it so the city can go ahead and move forward with it.
Not the drainage tanks.
There isn't any, is there?
There's five dollars.
Five dollars.
Dollars, okay.
Oh, yeah, just five dollars assessment.
Okay.
You'll have to pay the drainage tanks.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can anybody do that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Like if I stopped and I needed a five dollar? Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause that's not on certificate, that's not on, that's, it does, wait, wait, that is on the certificate. Now, on the certificate, there was no property taxes, it was just the five dollar drainage assessment and then special assessments, so.
We have no way to abate drainage.
Right, right, yeah, yep, oh, we'll take care of that.
Would someone like to make a motion to abate the taxes on Twitter, say aye, DeWitt Street in Laverne, Iowa? What's been presented, Con? I need a second.
I'll second.
Lecter? Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, abstaining.
Let let the record show that Carter abstained.
And we can talk some more on that, so.
Yep.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous. Mine is Carter.
Thanks, Nick, I'll be in dikes.
Okay.
We're up to county engineer's contract, do you, do you want Doug here or do you want me?
Yeah. Hey Doug, we're ready for you in the boardroom.
Right back.
Thanks.
Well, I'm excited to have that one taken care of, we're hoping to. Have that going down the year.
Clean up one more?
Yeah.
And go go grab some water while Jack's. I'm not taking full breaks.
My scyances are.
Are sinuses?
Yeah. I like the smoke from the wildfires the other day, 'cause I was outside, I thought we shut it and.
Yeah, just been, Saturday's thick.
Yeah.
Yeah, well, it's thick Saturday.
I don't think it was worse than Saturday has ever been.
Well, got up Saturday morning, it wasn't so bad, my neighbor was burning, uh, he's got a burn pile over there and and next door and all of a sudden, there's smoke coming out of. It's a little smokier than from a burn pile.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Morning, Doug.
Is there anything?
Left of Canada?
Yeah, I don't know.
Hope it's a little burnt.
I don't, but they got a lot of trees.
It's going all summer, yeah.
There could be nothing left after you think. That house you vacated, Carter, was that where Ramus used to live?
Um.
Years ago?
No, like Bert Ramus? Uh, no, that wouldn't be Bert.
Okay.
Um, not theirs, but I don't know, guess I don't know who used to live there years ago.
I know Bob Ramus used to live on that.
Oh, Bob, I don't know, yeah.
He'd been dead for quite a few years ago.
Before me, yeah. No, that was uh Brian Williams, that's who's lived there for thirteen, fourteen years, but, or if you don't live there now, but.
I told the girls in the office, I think we should get a do-over for yesterday, 'cause it was so chilly, doesn't happen this summer day.
It did bore on Saturday, though, I'm sure you know the.
Pardon me?
It did bore on Saturday.
Oh, did it?
They, they pulled it out.
I have your life, is it full on?
No. The electric company through yesterday and stopped asking whether they're gonna pull the juice, he said, uh, we will pitch your juice off of next week. They were, they weren't very happy with how much. That box by the shed. He was like, why they left us on the wire? He asked Doug. Pull him back down, he was, we got a day for this, I looked for him, he said, I don't know why they left us on the wire.
Yeah? Morning, Jack.
Yeah, you can just play a long time, we'll talk about that.
Yeah, they come in with two more.
Do you want to just wait?
Good, let's move forward. Find it.
Yeah, twenty. Yeah, everybody's back, um. Carter, did you put this on the agenda, I think?
I did.
Or compiled it?
Yeah, so I guess my first question is to Doug, um, you heard our conversation last week, are you willing to have discussions about amending the contract? That we're currently in now, since it auto renewed or not?
Um, again, I guess I was not, I was under the impression that this was discussion amongst the board of supervisors. And uh, I would appreciate some sort of a invite. I mean, I think the agenda item, it doesn't say anything about who is supposed to be here, what discussion is supposed to be done, so I am here to observe.
After last week's meeting, I guess, we did say during the meeting that it would be on the agenda today and what we'd like to discuss.
That, I mean, I think that discussion was amongst board of supervisors also, Carter.
I I think I fairly clearly asked for you to answer that question twice and asked if having it on the agenda.
I'm not interested in renewing or am I any kind of a?
Okay. That answers that question for me. Anyone else have anything for this topic at this time?
Um, being that it does state um, in point eleven of the contract, this contract may be amended, revised, renewed or extended at any time only by written approval of the board and the engineer. Would it be all right to put something, um, could I submit something in writing? Why don't I can submit it, but could we move forward, submit something in writing to be approved on the, on another agenda for the board to to amend? And put in writing per um per acceptance from the engineer as well? Changing the language in in one section of the of the contract. And the board can submit writing, but both sides have to submit writing, I understand that, but. Could, could I, could I do that?
Um, if you, you can at any given time, if you want to. I I'd appreciate it if you wait until Jack was back so he.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine.
So he'd have input in it.
No big, big rush, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I I have, I think I have a, an idea um for for language um change in one section of of uh of the contract here regarding the unanimous whole clause. Uh, but if I could submit that, I'll submit that via email to the board and to Doug. Um, prior to when we would have that, you know, a couple of weeks prior to when we'd have that on the agenda, I'll 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 just type that up this week and. Um, when is, when are you back, Jack?
Um, we got the next two meetings.
Next two. Well, you're gone actually, or you're gone, you're gone in two weeks.
Two.
Till the eighth, you'll be back.
August eighth, we put it on for August eighth, I'll also submit language to the board and and I'll copy Tammy in that as well.
Can you um talk to me after the meeting so we can discuss how you want it worded on the?
Yeah, absolutely, yep, yep.
Not the house for me.
Do you want anything in the record or we're just, that we put it to a future date, you don't want anything in minutes?
Yeah, I mean, it'll be on the agenda for, so that that'll be.
Yeah.
Today's agenda.
Yeah, it it could be on the minutes that we'll talk about on the eighth, that'll be fine.
Yeah, correct, yep, that'll be.
August eighth.
Hopefully to also tell Doug what was going on prior to him getting in there about about the new road, so he's not blindsided by that.
Oh, that's good.
Well, yeah, I figured we'd talk during the discussion.
Yeah, we'll have that, but that's different.
That's why bringing it up, we're in discussion.
We will go to our next agenda item, discussion, decision on construction in the right of way. We have one item in our folder.
Uh, yeah, there's actually two requests, uh, one is from Interstate Power and Light, uh, this would be kind of west of Burt. Uh, there is a hog confinement, uh, pork confinement going up and um Interstate Power and Light would like to install one span of overhead utilities on two hundred and eightieth street, the north side of two hundred and eightieth street and then bore the remainder of the way in the road right of way. I would recommend that the board would approve of this request.
I would move to approve the request for construction in the right of way. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Con, any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous.
All beans off that farm last fall.
What's that?
Plum creek pigs.
I'll just bring these all up, both of these, I have two handles. The second request is by Midland Power, uh, they are removing a overhead and replacing it with a underground. So they'll be borrowing the proposals to bore from the east side of eightieth avenue, uh, under the road into the west side of eightieth avenue, and again, I would recommend that the board would approve of this permit as well.
I would move to approve, do I have a second?
I'll second.
Second by Lecter? Any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimous.
Look at that, those sign there, Roger, on the bottom, thank you.
Very good, thank you.
That's all the construction of the road right of way.
Tammy, would you wanna read that motion to Doug for the um?
Doug, um, can I read the motion to you that the board made earlier in the today's meeting? It was a motion by, hold on, I gotta get to the right page. It's a motion by Spector, by Lecter, to direct the county engineer and the county attorney to look into classifying one sixty fifth avenue between two hundred and fiftieth street and two hundred and sixtieth street as a class C road.
Okay, that request needs to come from landowners for level C roads.
That was the request.
He was.
It's gotta come in writing from all the landowners affected.
Is that in the code section?
That's in our ordinance, I believe.
State chair, this is uh, this is uh, Greg Albert, he's one of the ones who wrote the property.
Hi, Greg. How are you?
Morning.
Pretty good, I want to go on.
Greg, you got any comments on your order?
Not right now, I don't.
It it affects you, I'm.
I mean, we, Passute County has an ordinance for level C roads. I could certainly uh summarize it, but I, I believe that landowners need to request it. That landowners would have keys to that and the county would have keys to it as well. Um, whether or not it's a level C road, it would still, I believe it is the intention to put a private bridge on a public road.
Yes. Yes.
I, whether it's a level A, whether it's a level B, whether it's a level C, I think a private bridge on a public road is still going to have the same same problems, uh, no matter what. One, that stream, I'm fairly confident would be under the jurisdiction of the US Army Corps and the Department of Natural Resources. Privately owned bridge on a public road, if there are any problems with US Corps of Engineers, Department of Natural Resources, they're gonna come back to the people that have the jurisdiction of the road, which is Cassoot County. Two, if it's over twenty feet, we are going to have to have that bridge analyzed, posted for we. We would be responsible for that because, again, it's a public road, we, we would have to do what is necessary. Three, if there was ever an accident, you're just opening Cassoot County's pocket for anything. Um, I will follow through with Todd, we will get the information, but simply, simply put, a private bridge on a public road, it isn't gonna eliminate anything. I went downstream from this location. There are a handful of privately owned bridges on privately owned properties. It is done. Again, a handful, and I invite you guys to look yourself. If anyone would like to go out to this location, I'm more than willing to put you in a pickup and we can go out there. But, uh, I think there are real concerns that, from a public standpoint, that should be addressed, whether it's a level C road or not.
What's, what's, what is it, uh, rated at now?
There's no bridge, there's no, the road. It is, uh, road closed, level A, it was never put into level B.
Level A means like, nothing done to the road at all?
No, level A is a regular road, but the road is closed, we regularly maintain it from south.
Did he send you the pictures from south, or about the north?
Um, we go down from the north every now and then, I don't know when the last time.
Did he send? But it showed there's nothing being done to that road.
Um, I don't believe there's too much travel from the north either.
Right, I mean, but it's, did he show you, did he send you?
I never received any fo- recent photographs, no, Jack.
They were all in our package. Probably sent them to your office and put them in, I would imagine.
I don't know, they're there.
He, he wouldn't have access to put them in there.
Well.
Unless he gave them, yeah, or something, I don't know.
I know we go out there, Jack, it's, the thing about it is it, it doesn't seem a lot of traffic from the north, there's just not too much.
Yeah, what did you say?
What was that?
Me or Carter?
Jeff.
Oh.
I'm looking to see.
He's looking at the details on the photos.
Mark, put them in there.
Okay, so he must have brought them in today.
Okay. Dad's got a date of today.
Okay. Cause I'm like, I have them there and I scan the background.
They wouldn't have had to have been in there before today.
Why?
Because I know I looked at them before today.
That, that was, that was there yesterday.
It would, yeah, I know that.
Oh, maybe you brought them in yesterday.
Well, okay, so the date is, when it's open.
Yeah.
Probably last.
Yeah, but.
You take him on seven eleven, so.
But there isn't. I mean, there isn't any, you know, reason, and we can certainly, we'll go out there and repair this.
Uh, date created, so that probably would have been that date because it was put in, it was the fourteenth.
Friday.
But I mean, you go, go to where Dick and Lynn's house is at.
Probably.
Right, right, you know.
You're, you're farming it right now, Greg. You, you don't farm it though, or?
There's just.
It doesn't look like it's easy to get to.
Okay, I, I can't, uh, that.
Well, they had to widen the driveway, they really took the bridge out a year ago, so I could get down in there to maintain the tenure reserve. Where our gate was too far to the north, I couldn't get in there with the tractor, disc, nothing, so we, they put another thirty feet on the driveway going on my side.
Good.
I don't care if it closed the road. I, well, I, uh, you guys have my side usually.
Well, we, last thing we wanna do is make it
I mean, I.
Bad, worse.
Yeah, I gotta go around the north side and, uh, I don't know.
You come in from both hands, you don't have a bridge across.
Yep.
Yeah.
I gotta walk the bridge down and get it to get across.
Okay. If, if you have any concerns, Greg.
Yeah, yeah.
Talk to Doug.
If you do anything, I have to get ahold of anybody, won't you?
Yeah. Yeah, Greg, if we were to vacate the road, all, all adjacent landowners would be notified of that.
Yeah.
Um, I, I, you know, a level C road.
Well, I know it's about vacated now, it's getting more shelter than.
Correct, it, it doesn't get a whole heck of a lot of traffic, but.
The land to the north, you, they access that from the gravel road then to the west?
To the west, young brown, sure they got, they got, they put down, you know, that they can get out, damn bad, and they can't get out off the ground, did they get, you know, access to come down, you know.
Any other comments or questions?
For the bridge or for?
For the road.
Oh, for the road, um, no, I.
Anything else, Doug?
Uh, yes. We received gravel crushing quotes, I will open those next week, uh, we'll get an agenda item on there, so you can listen to that. Uh, wind projects, uh, Cassoot Wind Energy Phase Two and the Lead Yard Wind, uh, Wind Project. Uh, there are a lot of weeds on the entrances, the seed did not really take off this spring when they were finishing. We have been in contact with them to get those sprayed, and they are spraying those. Um, Josh, last week you brought up, uh, out by, uh, Meadow Ridge.
Mm-hmm.
I could not find, if you go east of that road, I couldn't find any problem there. So, I, I don't exactly know what you were.
I got some pictures, I was, I was gonna stop down last week, but we left, but, um, they had sent some pictures, I'll show you the pictures that I got.
Yeah, you could forward them to me or, so, but yes. Um, next week we have, the Highway Department of Transportation is, uh, doing a traffic count on all road, not all roads, but certain roads in Cassoot County. Uh, so if you see hoses going across the road, you'll know that, um, the traffic counts are out. Uh, resurfacing projects, we are expecting them to move in their plant anytime now, according to their pre-construction conference. Uh, we've not heard from them, but, uh, we would assume that resurfacing will begin soon. The project, bridge project, south of Titanca, uh, they started driving pierpiling and hit, uh, a rock layer that was identified in the soundings. Uh, they are bringing in jetting equipment, so that is supposed to be going on probably as we speak, and, uh, hopefully the jetting equipment will, uh, work that or sand, gravel, and rock out so the piling can go down. Uh, thistles being sprayed in the north, north third of the county, that is, should be completed today. Patching, uh, we've completed, uh, the bridge that is west of Big Six, uh, elevator, the four-way bridge and a culvert to the east of the four-way bridge have both been patched. Uh, Oak Lake Road, we had a patch, and the Hannah Blacktop, we had a patch. Uh, Blacktop Service moved out for a week. Um, we, we'll, we still have P sixty-four south of Titanca and the bridge at Irvington to patch, and then we have a couple, we gotta patch at, uh, north of Whitmore and near where Nick Ram lives, so we'll get those completed. Um, DD sixty, lateral one, they are boring under A sixteen, they were digging the pitch yesterday and the schedule was that they'd be boring under A sixteen. I have been up to the Highway fifteen Bridge Replacement Project recently, we still have our open positions, um, we need to schedule some interviews. Uh, Sway City Shop, you may have noticed, we did buy some materials from West Bend, uh, lumberyard, and those are going to the Sway City Shop, we'll be putting a new front on that. Uh, Albona Fire Department last week called me, um, they would like to use the Irvington pits for an exercise. Uh, the exercise is to, for lack of any other better terms, they have some sort of a, uh, pond, a pool, man-made pool that they can put water in, they sent a pumper truck up to it, pull the water out to spray out fires. They want to do an exercise with their people as far as, uh, making sure that everyone is, uh, aware of how that works and making sure that it works well. Um, so some Monday night, if you see that going on down at the Irvington pits, I have granted them permission to do that. I'm working on the annual report, I did not get that, uh, playground sign engineer report completed, working on that this week. And then, uh, end of year fiscal reports for self-insurance, to get some things taken care of with that I'm working on, so that's kind of a comments from, discussion points from the county attorney.
Anything else for Doug?
Actually, one last thing, I got a phone call up, I was looking at the street, uh, two hundred thirtieth street is down where Tony Sink and that mile west of the, um, Titanca Black up there and then Ruben Scowes Road, going a mile east. Um, I know you're in contact with BMW quite a bit or with them, and there's giant ragweed growing in the ditch there, um, along both Tony's and Ruben's road there. Um, so I don't know if they, I know they go back and spray or do touch-up on Fridays, so, you know, maybe that was a spot that they did touch up, um, I don't know.
Ragweed is not a noxious weed.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
But, having said that, we still try to control
Sure, sure.
in certain situations. So this would be two hundred thirty street, one mile east and one mile west of P sixty-four?
Correct, yep. That was the area I got a call on, so.
But no, uh, we spray for noxious weeds.
Sure, yep, yep.
Or, or contracted, so we're noxious weeds.
Yep, yep.
Anything else for Doug?
Was somebody gonna get ahold of Todd also, or was that my duty?
No, I, I will send an email to him.
To both of us?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right.
Thanks, Doug.
Thank you, bud.
Thank you.
Tammy, right before you do drainage?
Or do you want to just keep rolling?
Or you wanna just get it done?
Better done.
Do you want me to call Mark or do you wanna go get her?
I'll get her.
You're the winner.
Yeah.
I see that.
Roger, I think you have one.
Two.
Yeah, two.
Yep.
Yeah, yeah, two.
Two to four.
Oh, power down.
I'm not sure we didn't fix that much before in Darren Jensen's.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
I'll make a note to look, see if there was old ones.
Not that it makes any difference.
Good morning.
Mark, we have up to drainage, and I see we have some requests for repairs.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want me to go first?
I'll let it.
I got, uh, on drain seventy-eight, number seventy-five, request is in Buffalo, Redding Schutcher. It's a broken tile, needs repair, and it's on CRP ground. And I'll have Brant do it. And my next one is on drain eighty-three, and the request number is seventy-seven. It's on lateral fourteen T and Lutz Creek, and there's a broken tile in the waterway. And I'll think about who's gonna do that one.
Ready for me?
Yep.
I got seventy-one, Hebron, section fourteen, broken tile, uh, for Darren Jensen. Then seventy-two is also Hebron, section eighteen, washout on East Bank, outlet pipe needs rip wrap round, he says. Also Darren Jensen. Seventy-three, Andrew, um, loves Lead Yard, section two, um, hole in buffer strip near the, near the ditch and on the main tile there. Seventy-four is for Michael Birdie, broken tile, um, Greenwood, section twenty-two. Seventy-six is Lincoln thirty-two, um, for Rob Price, broken tile, this is in, um, in Beans, and it's flagged along the fence line, it looks like.
That will not do this one, everyone wants to do it.
I'd like the motion for supervisors to handle their drainage request, their drainage request.
Motion and a second on the floor, everybody understand the motion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. We got a minute to talk, to run about the water.
Yeah, so I haven't had a chance to talk to Ron about this yet. He was gone on Friday and I completely forgot about it yesterday, but at Thursday's department head meeting, Todd had mentioned that when we had that heavy rain and it came through the front door and got the mat all wet, that they also had leakage in their office where there was water standing, I understand. And so he was wondering, Kyle and Roger, whether also if you wanted to bring it to our attention because they did have some files that got let, if we could look into it and find out why it's leaking. He was under the understanding that it didn't come from the hallway, that it came either through the cement block or through the windows.
No, yeah, but he didn't know for sure.
Yeah, for sure, so we wanted to.
That's that's the first time.
We wanted to talk to you and find out, yeah, and that's what he had said.
Yep.
To find if there's anything we could do, he didn't know if there was drainage, or any kind of drainage from when they did the landscaping there, or.
This is clear back from when me and Pearson were here. We dug up that whole side of the building. It had been retard, insulated, there's tile there. But the water has either got down to where at the base level. And there's, that's where the tunnel is right along there, so.
Should we call Todd and see, so he can hear this too?
Yeah.
Yeah, I wonder.
Sorry.
See one fourth.
That way he's, we're all on the same page then, and I don't have to try to remember.
Hey Todd, we're talking to Ron right now about the water issues and stuff, if you want to come up, you could join. Perfect, thanks.
Without being snotty, my suggestion on the wet files, don't put your files on the floor. I mean, that's kind of an over here.
Marge, but.
We looked into, I've had my mother-in-law, have you seen them guys that come and they'll run that probe down alongside the building? They pump in that, it's like a slurry solution with, it's almost like a light concrete glue. And it gets into those veins and then it solidifies. And had really good luck with that. I mean, the other option is tearing up that whole side of the building.
I don't know what it is.
Well, it's like the first time, I mean, it's.
No, I know, it's been, and I don't know when it happened, when it started. Everybody kind of thought maybe it stuck around time landscape and it was done, but I'm not sure.
It was before that, but at that point, we retard, it was, it's, there's B rock and tile down there.
Okay.
But it's just whether that foundation has moved, I don't know.
And it isn't every rain, it's when we get a.
Those gully guys.
The gully washer, yeah.
Because I'm assuming that that tile, because that tile goes along the whole side of the building and then it connects in.
I thought that we had tile.
With the drain, yep.
Yeah. It isn't from the roof? That water runs over, or?
No, because the scupper goes out, scupper goes out the west side.
That's what I thought.
On that one, yep.
That wouldn't have any effect on that.
Uh-uh.
And this, I think, I don't know if it happened before, but you know, I was mentioning at the department head meeting that this time it came through the doors and that, in the front.
Oh, the drain couldn't keep up.
Yeah.
It rained so hard, it literally filled up that whole entryway and it was coming in the door.
So you don't think that tile's plugged that's there?
I don't think it's plugged. I mean, because it drains every other time, but when you get that heavy of a rain, it just can't take it that fast.
So it wouldn't be worth it to run a camera down it and look at it, or?
Oh, you could probably try, but it.
Do you know what size tile it is?
Uh, that one is a six inch.
Six?
Yeah, alongside the building was.
And it dumps into the city storms?
Yeah, the one.
On the street?
No, not to the street, it comes from the west heading this way and then it taps in to where the drain goes up.
But it's in the parking lot?
No.
Oh.
It comes straight from the street on the west side, just right over.
It comes all the way down here.
Along.
Wherever that, but I see, I don't know where the drain goes that's at the entrance. That drain, that trench drain there?
Yeah.
Whether that goes to the storm sewer, I have no idea where that goes, that's just always been there.
Okay.
When we redid the ramp, it just got hooked back up, that was back when Barney was still here, that just got hooked back up. But that tile that comes along the building has tapped into that.
So they're not too separate?
No.
Oh, okay, we probably should try and tell the vice then.
So when that tile got full, maybe then that tile was full and the water was coming out of the tile and being pushed in.
Possible.
Yeah, because.
If the water's coming in there, it means the tile was full.
Their title was.
Trying, pushing water out of the tile and probably pushed it through, through the foundation then.
Well, the tile could have made it worse is what we're trying, he's trying to say then.
Possible.
If it was overloaded, it was pushing to the foundation.
Sounds to me like that's probably what happened.
And actually, if it was plugged or blocked on its way towards the street, it could be draining through that rock or whatever along the foundation of the building on normal storms even.
Yeah, and didn't they do some work on the street? Were they dug it up, or didn't?
Yeah, but that was, it was more towards the corner, that's when they pulled the water line and the drain out of the old jail.
Okay, that was more, that wasn't right there?
Yeah, that was over ways.
Okay.
So that shouldn't have affected that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't ever, I mean, I've been here for a long time and I, you know, don't ever remember having problems until, you know, the last maybe few years. So, I mean, we've had gully washers before, so I don't know what it is, maybe it is plugged or maybe it needs to be looked at. All I know is we were wet. So. Well, it'd probably behoove us to get a camera and go take a peek and see if it's partially plugged or totally plugged or really what's going on until you look in it. We don't know.
Because like I said, that, that whole side of the building was dug up and it's, somewhere there's pictures of that. But it was all, all foundation coating, two-inch cerdaphone, P rock and tile.
So is it coming over the foundation and through the windows?
That day, I would have thought so. That day I would have thought so, but, but I know, but there's been days before that we went in there and there'll be a dribble coming out of there. And it's not that heavy of a rain.
The parking lot really don't slope that way.
No, it goes to the west.
Yeah.
Except for the top of the ramp, that's what comes down. Definitely look into a camera.
I think it'd probably be. Good place to start. Yeah. Because, you know, ultimately if we continue to have issues with that, it's going to affect, it's going to affect the flooring and the wainscoting, the dead side, so you know, we put some good money into that, we want to try and preserve it. I don't know why it's doing it, but it's one of those things where something is, something is different than what it, what it has been in the past. And I don't know, plug tile makes sense to me because those things.
But there's got, there's got to be some, some crack of some sort because the tunnel doesn't fill up. I mean, if it's coming up from the foundation.
Then it would, yeah.
It would, it would be.
Well, see, that's the odd thing too, because I asked to think Willie, you know, if it's wet down below, because it's below us is the boiler room. And.
Well, and the tunnel goes, the tunnel goes right underneath your office and that tunnel.
There's nothing down there, so. It's kind of odd.
Yeah? I'd say there's got to be some type of separation in that foundation where they put the footing in to where when they started building, if it's getting in, in through there.
It's kind of weird to me, that tunnel should be filling up with water.
Should be filling up with water.
Right. So I don't know, it's a mystery, but maybe that's the easiest thing to do first and see if it's something simple.
Oh.
You want to get a little assembly around?
Yep.
You'll, if you need some numbers, get ahold of us.
Yeah, oh, there's a couple of different places that have cameras.
Good.
Sometimes you gotta be careful, they like going down sewer pipes, but they don't like running down tile.
Well, yeah, that's what I was.
It's a little tougher running down tile, because you can get your camera stuck really.
In the cornea.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But if it's big enough, they'll, they'll shiver down there.
The only thing the county has is a locator to shove down, and I don't think that's going to tell us much.
Yeah. I've used Empire by Services for a lot of field tile stuff, but they're out of Mankato. I mean, they're better for the north end of the town.
And that's a little bigger tile.
Yeah, but they, they do a lot of sewer stuff too, and they have, I know they have a, one of their cameras, they can send an auxiliary one out the side and go up like laterals to private homes and everything. So I'm sure they could do it, I just don't know which trailer they'd have to bring for it, but if we told them what it was, I'm sure they can do it. And the pictures are nice.
There's, they got, they got crawling one, their vision. Ridding's got one.
Yep.
Plum Chaff's got one.
Nine.
There's clean out with it. Yep.
Okay. Yeah, thanks Ron.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
I'll run with it.
I've seen something new coming over here I've never seen before this morning.
What's that?
Little drones flying a field and there were people in the back of a truck.
Yeah.
Going. And they were spraying right by Bancroft with two big drones.
Oh, they were spraying?
In the same field.
They were spraying with the drone?
Yeah.
Wow.
Doesn't surprise me.
But it was state line, I, I think, I know.
That surprises me.
Yeah. I don't think I've ever seen that before where they were, they had an actual pad where they could land on, on top of the truck.
Interesting.
Yeah.
You have big drones.
Yeah, that'd be good size.
And they had lights on them.
Still have that pilot's license for those.
These, these were large drones.
Yeah, yeah, you still have to go through, you gotta get your license and certifications and everything for it, yeah.
I'm not so sure they went five foot across, they, they were.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, they were good size. We're up to discussion with our auditor.
Okay, reminder, tonight is the Farm Bureau Appreciation Picnic at the Fairgrounds from five thirty till, I don't know what time it goes to seven, seven o'clock. And then next week, on the twenty-sixth, Wednesday the twenty-sixth, is the countywide breakfast at St. Michael's Parish in Eric Whittmore, and that's from seven o'clock to nine o'clock. I will be gone next week, Wednesday through Friday. And then on a calendar or on our agenda for next week, we have to review the engineer study for sign placement near P forty and eight twenty-one, we have approving the quarterly reports. And that's all we have in our agenda so far for next week. Let's see what else I have. Year end is finished, so with the treasurer's office and the auditor's office, so we're all good with that. So we are now officially into our new fiscal year. We will get all the reports sent out to Elizabeth at the auditing firm, she has a list of things that she requests. And then they will set up a time when they can serve with their audit, so we'll be working on that. We're also working right now on taxes, so Kristina started that process. And we'll be getting that done here in the next week or so, so always busy doing something, so I think that's all I have.
No big agenda for next week?
Nope, pretty quiet.
We've had a lot of big agendas. Past couple months, though, that's okay to have a couple smaller ones.
Yeah.
Everybody signed up for St. Michael's Parish on Wednesday?
Yep, I RSVP'd, there's four of you going, Jack and I aren't able to attend, but they have four of you, I have RSVP'd for you, so.
Jack, did you have anything last week?
Surgery on my ear, was that?
It looks good, it looks good.
Yeah, we got it all the first time, so it's good.
That's good, I'm glad you did it now.
Carter?
I had no board meetings, but just point of interest. In Wright County Board Supervisor Meeting yesterday, they discussed a possible ordinance in regards to usage of the right-of-way and pipeline companies and that would affect pipeline companies. And with the supervisor saying that they don't have the authority, that Summit doesn't have the, or excuse me. That they don't have the authority to grant, supervisors don't have the authority to grant rights to companies to operate in the right-of-way without an ordinance, that's their reason. So that they need, they, they're trying to draft something for the right-of-way to regulate that from a county standpoint. Should a company want to go through.
Is that for them to parallel the road in the right-of-way or just crossing, you know?
Um, I don't think it would be. I think it's both, or I mean, it is regulating the right-of-way as far as, in, in general, is my understanding, but I don't know how all the language reads, but I would like to look into that and see what, what they're trying to do, but. But anyway, just letting you know that's been going on the last couple of weeks, and they just had a public hearing yesterday and. Also, I did visit with the ethanol plant in Goldfield. And because they were also approached by Carbon Sink, who had approached us in regards to methanol production facility. Because it is renewable energy industry, they they gather their electricity from other renewable fuel sources and primarily wind energy. And so the ethanol plant was on board up to the point that they were going to need to build around a hundred wind turbines in the Goldfield area in order to supply a methanol facility because they require so much electricity. So that was kind of the, put the kibosh to them wanting to proceed down in Goldfield and and you know, I posed the question, okay, so we have a hundred and, I forget what the number is up north, you know, already around the ethanol plant that is in that neighborhood, but they would need to build additional ones because those are already being used elsewhere. You know, I mean, they would have to, so that, that was unfortunate to hear, you know, I was a little bit excited about it, but so just letting you know that there is that catch to the, that they, they have these renewable fuel sources to power. So however that looks and.
So unless we build more wind turbines.
Unless we build more wind turbines, that methanol production facility is probably not an option.
Yeah, you.
Not that it's impossible, but that's what they usually go to, so.
I talked, when I talked to him, he said a hundred megawatts. That's a lot of windmills.
Yes, yes. Well, and that's what, you know, Goldfield is about seventy-five million gallons of production and Lakota is over a hundred. And so, you know, they were quoting a hundred-ish wind turbines for Goldfield, it would be more than that for Lakota, so, yeah. This, I don't know.
Hundred and quarter, hundred.
Yeah, I thought that was interesting information to share, but, yeah. But that's all I got.
Hey, what meetings?
Huh?
We kind of talked about it before at this department head meeting on Thursday. Water issue, we already talked about, but we talked about the change in pay scale or pay periods and all that, and I don't know if you want to touch on that Tammy, otherwise I can do that quick. Basically, there was enough questions and discussion and lack of a clear, agreeable path forward, that it was kind of just decided to leave it alone for now. Then was just going to bring up for discussion sake, I don't remember if we talked on it last week or not, but the Shelby County Court case has been decided, so the judge's ruling is out if. The judge's ruling is out, if, if anyone wants to look at it, they can.
Pretty clear.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not gonna, not gonna speak on too much of it, I read the summary, and have started on other pieces of it, I think it's thirty-seven pages, if I remember right, but. Anyone who wants to know what's in there can read it themselves and make their own judgment, so.
I was gonna say, I thought we got an email on that.
Yeah, we.
We, well, we did.
We did, um, but any members of the public, et cetera, too, they can read it, um, so. That's what I had.
I went to the District Two Iowa Highway Program last Wednesday. Um, basically, from Mason City to Algonah, it's plenty are done, they got a few things to do yet this year, and that, that stretch will be done. Um, from Clear Lake, about two, if you know where Missouri is, they're gonna do an overlay on thirty-five, two, two overlays. Try to take care of the potholes, that's in pretty bad shape. Um. From Algonah. To Wittenmore, the road, the highway's in pretty good shape, and from Wittenmore West, it's, needs a lot of attention, and that's in a different district, so I. They're not, they don't have it as a priority to get that fixed, which is kind of a shame, cause it's kind of a rough.
It's bad.
It's bad.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, here's a map of the projects until two thousand and eight, it's kinda interesting. Uh, went to the NiacoG meeting, we got some more new buses, uh, still have two old, six old Fords left that wanna die all the time. And. Went back and looked at the shop, and how they're fixing them, they've got a really nice shop back there, I had never been back there before, I was impressed. It was clean and neat. And. Uh, we talked about, uh, RPA funding for different, uh, projects, most of those are in, are trails. And we really don't have any right here by Algonah, they got, uh, Garden, and East, and most of them are. And that was about it, except that department head meeting, same thing. And safety. Went to the safety meeting, uh, nothing real interesting. Been trying to get Nick Ram to be a member on the safety committee. That's the only office that somebody isn't, uh, on it. It was a short meeting, took fifteen minutes. Anything else? If not, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Now. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried unanimously. We're adjourned.